All right, it is 7:01, time to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to do a little prayer tonight? Or please give us the ability to make judgments that are for the best of the city, with a level head and a level mind. Your name is correct.
Amen.
You didn't even... All right. Call Roman.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
Mr. Taylor? Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth is there, I don't think? Mr. Booth? Yes, he's calling.
Here.
Ms. Joe?
Yes.
All right. Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting on May 13? Motion to adopt? A motion to approve?
That was the special meeting.
Special meeting, yes.
I made that mistake. And for your meeting, I wait up.
And the regular meeting on May 2.
Motion to approve?
Yep. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Was it here?
All right, we are... Are we... And are we... Auditor Treasurer's report? Okay. Take it away, Taylor. Good evening, Council. I'll start with the Treasurer's report, which should be printed out on your desktop. On the first page, we just have the summary of bank account balances, which is currently 2.824 million. The next page is just a summary of the rest. You'll see at the far right, year-to-date interest on each current account, just $630 or $70. It's about, I don't know, Gary, what's that, one one-hundredth of what it used to be about 10 years ago? What's that? Interest? Oh, it just...
Yeah, it went a lot, huh?
We used to get a lot more. So, moving on from that, is Mr. Malane, the Treasurer's reconciliation. We worked through a couple of things, like a bounce check you'll see in parentheses, about two inches from the bottom. Otherwise, everything he found that I posted, posted to the bank. You'll see that bounce check again on the next one, which he adjusted for, as well as, I don't know what to call it, but we've, Ohio University payroll. They had some snafu, you'll see an adjustment for it, it's called Ohio University Payback. Essentially, the money came in, bounced out, and they had to send a check. So, still not really sure what happened with them, but they did pay. And that's about it. You'll see the difference at the bottom between books and bank at zero dollars and zero cents. So, we referenced that. For the auditor's report, I asked the City Manager to scroll through, so this is a new format for me. It's to make it more easily shared, as well as simpler, as far as in design and scope. So, I'm gonna try out this format from now on. So, this is the April 2021 auditor's report. I will start with the financial summary. Generally, the city revenues outpaced expenses. You'll see revenues for April at 565,753. I'm sorry, revenues, as I think I said, and then expenses at 432,621. You'll see, and also for the first third of the year, revenues outpaced expenses just ever so slightly. Funds, funds as a percentage of their healthy balance. The general fund skipping up to 50, the street funds up to 70, capital improvement and healthy status, the water fund hitting it for the first time, sewer fund down at 73. My summary is there below. Currently, fund balances have been creeping towards healthy balance over the last year, with a goal at having all of the major funds in a safe territory by the end of next year. Reason being, if anybody has questions, is to provide stability to services during a wild economic time, confidence for the workforce, knowing their jobs are safe, secure, and will grow, and continue to improve, and a basic support from which to invest into the town. Some revenues that are ahead of projections are income tax, rental registrations, local government fund, mayor's court, water rents. Some revenues that are behind, although some just barely, are sewer, gas tax, and bank account interest, as mentioned. Some quick stats since January 1st. My office has processed 461 accounts payable checks, 554 invoices, 520 payroll checks, at an average of 49 a week. 9,200 utility bills sent, processed, and paid through Robert and Cindy. 4,000 income tax transactions. And then in the last month, we helped digitize all the missing years of council ordinances, resolutions, minutes, with the help of Mr. Spellman and Tom and Sahari. Next, you'll see, it's probably gonna be hard for you to see at home, but if Council, if you have your laptops, or I can print it out after, here's our statement of cash position, which just puts in columns what I've already said. That looks like it won't make it any bigger.
I'm gonna try.
But that is available on my Facebook and the website for folks to look closer. So, the next session, comparing 2020 payroll to 2021. I wanted to do some summaries here. You will see in April 2020, payroll expenses at 593,000. Currently, through April, it's 527,000 for the year. Overtime hours, April 2020 through April, 1,261 hours at a cost of almost 36,000. As of April 30th this year, 717 hours, nearly 40% reduction, at a cost of $20,000. I wanted to specifically call out, I put specially, but I meant to put specifically, call out the police department, who exemplified some of the changes made at City Hall, and how the, and they also show how it impacts city costs and our bottom line. So, through 2020, total PD payroll 188,000. 2021, same time, 146,000. Overtime hours through this time, 2020, 841. And through April 30th this year, 447. Just creeping up, just under 50% reduction. Some other quick payroll fast facts, I thought Council might appreciate. Voluntary contributions to Ohio deferred comp from employees is up 49%. I think it shows employees are saving and invested in their jobs. All payments are direct deposit, except for one. Employee portals will be set up soon, and there's an image down below of what that looks like, if you might scroll for me, Scott. Going the wrong way, that's okay. So, this is what everybody's employee portal will look like. They'll be able to check all their pay stubs, W-2s, sign up for health insurance, input their vacation and sick time requests, and make Scott mine, and all the department heads' lives very easy, or easier. The final things I wanted to say was, for anyone listening or who has friends behind on filing taxes, we're gonna start penalties and interest June 18th. We legally can have started May 18th, but I give a 30-day window. Just many notices out. And then we got great news last week. After the state discounted our liabilities to them, left behind from the prior administration, $26,000 to $50. The IRS took off $186,000 off of our liabilities owed to them. And that was for just one year, and we will hear about the other year any moment. Hopefully, that brings us up to 415,000 saved liabilities from past years. That's great. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Next one, could you please press one?
I can. Yes, I can.
Be cool in the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Should approve the Treasury Auditor's report? Motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Joe? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor? I heard you.
Mayor's Court Report and Roll Call. Okay, so Mayor's Court, cash flow up to, for April 2021. All right. City revenue from current period is $4,832. Year-to-date is $17,411. Last year, year-to-date, $903. State revenue, current period, 1350, 50? Year-to-date, $5,143.50. Last year, year-to-date, $254. Total revenue. Six, this current period is $6,229. Year-to-date, $22,730. Last year-to-date, $1,166.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, it is.
And overtime is cut and hand. Good job, Chief Fitch.
Thanks.
Good job, Jackie.
Thanks, guys. We haven't had a motion to approve.
Yep, motion to approve.
Just like that.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Joe? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Do we have any citizens' comments, Scott? Okay, other than folks announcing that they're watching, that's okay. All right, any business and organizational comments? Any committee discussions pending, you know?
Yeah.
Any meetings you want to announce?
Not meetings, but just to report out. Planning and Development had a meeting last Monday on May 17th, where we discussed, actually, we had Jason Reed from Wayne National Forest in as a special guest to talk about the ATV trails and the expansion of those, and some things that they're doing, as well as to discuss our thoughts about ATV friendly in the city. So, the key talk is 90 miles of trail in the Athens unit of Wayne National Forest. Right now, they have a 50-inch width limit, but they're looking to increase that to 62-inch.
Which would be side to side.
Yeah. Side. We talked about that. We also talked about some changes to the lodging tax, transient guest tax ordinance, and potentially the placing bike lanes on Canal Street with the addition of the trailhead, don't build for bait leaves. So, I think they're also currently being looked at.
All right. Anyone else?
The follow-up to that, one of the things I looked at, because one of the takeaways was it even feasible to put, or even possible to put a bike lane on Canal Street? And by the measurements we've done, I don't think it would be a problem. Guys decided to do that.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Get off. Just one side.
And we would mirror what they've done on the old 33 going north toward Haightville. I guess it's the in-town center of Athens.
Yeah, saw that, where they did that in the Haightville. It's nice. Okay. All right. Now, we're onto the police department and the code enforcement update. Police Department, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This one here, we'll start off with the, so far in 2021, some of our statistics. This first one here depicts the year-to-date arrests released by the municipal court policies and the arrest that was unable to be housed at regional jail. And then the next.
Do you have a move?
Yes, please. This one is the year-to-date, the traffic citations. Right now, currently, 242 actual just moving violations. Parking tickets is 19, our criminal arrests is 195. And our arrest for just having warrants is 151, which is, everything I can find is astronomically higher than previous years. So, I don't know, you can move that two ways, whether that'd be good or bad. And the next one is our blue slips. We've had 30 so far to this year. Our year-to-date reports, we've taken 522 criminal complaints. And our calls for services, about 4325, just for, that it's actually reported upon, that we've responded to. Just giving you a heads up on as far as, you know, one of the things that I've really been striving to do is find money and resources for training of the officers. We just had Officer Dolly last week completed the week-long handgun instructors training, so where we can be certified through a pod at with an in-house instructor, where we don't have to pay outside instruction or any travel cost. He also goes next week for the two-day shotgun training, instructor training course, which, again, for the same reasons, will save us a significant amount of money and drive time, and it'll give us more training in-house throughout the year. Just to mount, the clerk is doing an amazing job. I keep putting more and more responsibility on her, and she's doing a really good job. She recently completed an online public records request course on, basically emphasizing legalities of, you know, public records requests, timeliness and effectiveness, and efficiently getting those out to people, and what needs to be redacted, if anything. Officer Jones is maintaining his current training requirements for the Ohio Peace Officer Training Academy with K-9 Attila. We're still working on, Officer Tracy and Officer Tolliver is working diligently, getting the evidence room still in line, it's coming along, it's come a long, long way. We're looking to computerize that and have everything scanned in and out, as opposed to the antiquated system that we've used for apparently since the beginning of time. All officers are currently up to date. They had some updated requirements, it was trained through a PODA, it was a legislation in the past. Everyone has successfully completed that training and is in compliance with all the standards for peace officer certificates within the state of Ohio at this point. I could go on, I've got every, at least every officer trained for, or scheduled for at least one training class that throughout the 2021 year. And the only ones that we've had to pay for at this point is the ones for instructors courses. The rest of them have been, I've found, money or favors or free training.
Nice. Any questions?
Thank you for making our city a little safer.
Thank you.
So, we talked about the savings that we've seen in overtime? And that's mostly due to your new scheduling system?
Yes, a significant number of it. And you, we've only been on that schedule now for about two months. So, we had almost three months of just the way it was. So, I look for that savings to just continue to increase. There's, there's actual pay periods now where we have just, when the guys are more proactive, you're gonna have more hours of overtime for responding, making an arrest at the end of the shift, you work over an hour here, an hour there. If more arrests you make, you're obviously gonna be in court more often on your day, possibly if that's on your days off. Then you're gonna have a few hours here and there, but that pales in comparison to just scheduling overtime, like was done in the past. There is virtually no scheduled overtime for the rest. I've actually put out the schedule for the remainder of 2021, and there is no assigned scheduled overtime. And nor will there be unless there's some unforeseen injuries or departures from the department. So, that, that's, this 12-hour shift, the guys, they all really, really like it. They get additional days off. My only concern was, the only concern I had with it was, guys getting, because they had more days off, they had to complete their paperwork before they go on their days off. So, I have something that, and they've been, they've been great. Not one time have I had an issue with guys not completing their paperwork prior to their days off. And that was really my only concern. They really like it. Sick time, which I don't, was really not much of a problem, but it hasn't occurred yet. So, it's, the guys like it, they're being just as proactive. So, there really isn't a downside to it, and it's definitely a cost-effective measure.
So, figured out, he had two and a half hours of overtime in the first pay period, 10 hours of pay, the second pay period, and then three and a half or three and a quarter of this last pay period. And we budgeted for 47.
Did you know that we had a camper meeting? Campers on this ground on June 5th, and the, one of the concerns was, the first year we had, there was a new police presence, and they felt a little uncomfortable in the middle of the night with a couple of people walking through the square.
Sure.
They feel a lot better with the insurance of the new police force. That, you know, they've stopped them through.
Yeah, I know, I've already told the guys, I can, once I get some more details, but I'm gonna assure you, there'll be people walking, the officers walking in and out through there and driving around, you know, throughout the night.
Right, I know, they know, that was one of their biggest concerns about this year. If I told them the new, new police force, things are a lot different now.
And for some reason, they feel that they wanna see more, and all I got is call, we'll be right there.
I think, I think they're expecting the insurance. Just seeing the visibility of it.
Thank you, Chief Fitch. Anyone have anything else for him?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Code enforcement.
Good evening, everyone. I wanna just talk about how I've changed up a few things. I normally always do code enforcement updates. I've decided, since I have to update more often, that I'll do code one week, and then the next time will be zoning. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So, I just wanna put a couple reminders out there for the citizens of Nelsonville, that grass needs to stay under eight inches. And they need to mow up to the alleyway as well. So, if your property borders or butts up against the alleyway, make sure, if you've got a fence, that you're mowing that grass to the alleyway as well. So, I've been going around town, I see a lot of people, and their alleys are pretty tall. So, I just wanna remind everyone, alleys are on your list as well to mow. Let's talk about trash a little bit. So, there's been a grace period, I haven't really been issuing any warnings during the grace period with the transfer of trash contracts. It's been a month and a half, and so I expect everyone should be on board with the schedule. Put your trash out front of your house, those that have to, other people, you know, that have had the okay by our office. Continue to put your trash in the alley, but everyone else that hasn't had an approval, put your trash out front. Remind, I see a lot of trash cans out all week long along the street. Put your trash cans out with your trash the night before trash pickup. Pick up your trash cans the night of trash pickup. It's really easy to remember in that way. So, you could put it out the night before, pick it up the night of. If anyone has any questions, feel free to contact the Code Department Office or the City Manager. So, I'll go over some permits that I've issued for the last month, month and a half. We've been getting trickling in rental permits that are coming in, a few at a time. So, we've got people that, at the beginning of the year, they decided they weren't gonna rent their places, they were gonna put them up for sale. Then they decided that, oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna start renting them again. So, I've got people that's trickling in to the office, and they're getting their rental permits. Even the folks that were late, the guideline, who contacted me and said, hey, I'll be able to get in there in April and get my rental permit. They've got their rental permits. So, people are doing a lot better on their rental permits. I've issued demo permits with them. I issued 102 John Street and 770 and 782 Poplar Street. Five dumpster permits have been issued, meaning people were cleaning. They're cleaning out their buildings, their, they could be cleaning up trash in the backyard, but people are cleaning. So, when you see dumpsters along the street, just be really careful when you pass them. A lot of folks have to stick them right out where they would park their car along the side of the street. Just know that I go around and I look at the dumpsters, and I know the permits that I issued. So, those dumpsters are legit. They come in, ask for permission to block the street or alley. I'm actively working on a crew to go up and clean 431 Fairview. The property owner, he was deceased, maybe three or four months ago. So, the property is promising for the land bank, so they may be working on that property and trying to recover it. But to keep the roof wrapped out, keep varmints out, animals, whatever, we're gonna clean up and possibly board up temporarily until the land bank recovers it. A couple parking lots have been paved in the city. 1230 Chestnut is a property, that's a parking lot that's been paved. Those apartments were built a few years ago, and I contacted the property owner. He promised he'd have those done this spring, and he followed through on his promise. The storage units on the end of the east side of town, they started paving their lot. The front part, the back part, will be sometime this spring or summer. I just wanna say the land bank is kicking butt in the city. They, they are working hard, and they're doing a fabulous job. I make sure I work hand-in-hand with the land bank, because, as you're aware, I don't have the budget to take care of those houses, and we've got a lot of vacant houses. So, I just wanna say thank you, Land Bank, for all that you're doing in the city. It's, we're all thankful. I don't know how many people talk to me about the houses and the work that they're doing. So, currently, we have, so I'm telling you this because a lot of these places have dumpsters in front of them. 354 Chestnut has a dumpster sitting in front of it, because he bought that. One of our firefighters bought it from the land bank, or he bid in, won the bid, or, you know, the whole process. He is, it's, it's full to the, to the top, so he's cleaning. So, you might see a dumpster off and on this year in front of that building. So, just be careful. It's a bad area to pull out. When you see a dumpster, be really careful. 495 Patton is almost done. It was another land bank property that was, that was sold and bought. It's looking really good. And 614 West High, that was a building that, when I first started here three years ago, we had drug overdoses, we had a death, we had a lot of crime. And I'm really proud of 614 West High. If you've ever been on West High Street, it was pretty rough a few years back. And it's getting a lot better. I'm very proud of the work that I've been able to accomplish on that street. And I'm currently working with the fire department in contacting the property owner at 427, or 426 Pleasant View. That house is in deplorable condition. That's the, that's the fire that we had on Pleasant View a few weeks back. Once I got back into the office, I went up and I did an investigation. And to be honest, that house probably should have been condemned years ago. There was trash up to my waist inside the house. I, to be honest, I don't know how these folks, the neighbors didn't call me about them. The, the health hazards that was in that house. And just the hazards for PD, for the police department, they were to respond to a call at that house. And for the fire department, I, when I was going around and doing the investigation, it was dry and... it was dry and warm that day, and they had so many diapers, used diapers, that were laying out on the side porches and on the backside of the house, that I was sliding into busted open diapers. And, and all I could think about was, what if it was one o'clock in the morning and PD was up there on a call, and they, and it was dark, because it's, it's right next to the wood line, and they, one of them slipped and fell on the debris that was on the ground. I mean, it's, it could have buried a person. So again, I just wanna put it out there. I know we don't have a rental inspection program, but if the city of Nelsonville had a rental inspection program, that house would not have been approved for renting. And I just worry, I worry for myself, I worry for our K nine officer and our K nine's that goes into those kinds of buildings. Um, and I worry about the fire department. Uh, the house was, was packed, it was up to your waist. And all I could think about is, when there's a fire, it's dark, right? And you can't see, and they're geared up. And, and what's gonna happen if they're in a house like that and one of them can't get out? So I, I just wanted to put that out to, to the community, I wanted to put it out to all council members, that some of these houses are very dangerous, and they're very dangerous to the community, and they're very dangerous to the city workers. And if we had a rental registration program or a rental inspection program, I believe our houses wouldn't get to the, to that, uh, that condition, because it's years of trash. And I emailed the property owner, but I don't think he's going to be taking care of that issue anytime soon. So then again, that's gonna be another expense to the code office. And right now, boards are fifty dollars apiece to board up. Cleanup's not cheap, so it's gonna be another expense to the city, an expense to anybody that has to work to take care of that. So either way, you, you could, you could pay to have a rental inspection, or you could pay to clean up the messes, because most owners walk away from buildings like that. Once, once they catch a fire, they, they, they just don't. I'm, well, I was gonna say, I'm done with my report.
Who cuts the grass at the land bank?
Um, the city was doing it. Uh, we've been in the process of trying to figure out how we're going to get those taken care of, because to be honest, our guys are really focusing on the roads this year.
So I meant, is, are we responsible or is someone else like?
We've done it. We're not responsible to the land bank.
We're just responsible.
Right. We just do it.
Got a question. I'm sorry, I'm not interrupting anything.
No, hold on.
I got a question from a citizen, John Meeks, Washington Street, or Wallenup Street, uh, for chief. Question, with all the overtime savings, how often are wall officers working by themselves?
Well, first of all, I would say, we've had seven shifts since we went to the twelve hours that have had officers assigned with their partner was off. But each one of those, I've tried, I've either covered with the K nine officer or myself. Also, anytime that that's the case on those seven occasions, they've been assigned, Hawking College has notified, and they're there, ready to, to respond if need be. So honestly, I wouldn't say there's been, there's been zero shifts when anybody's been working by themselves.
Thank you very much.
You'll be safe.
Yeah, that's okay, secure.
Becky, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Besides the people that don't like the trash pickup, you know, in the street or the alleys, how's the transition been between, you know, the trash pickups? I mean, have you gotten any complaints on trash not getting picked up, being missed or anything like that?
From the company?
Yeah.
I've got a few complaints where the folks, all the meetings we've had, all the announcements we've made, the trash is to be picked up in the front, they're still putting their trash in the back, in the alley. So two or three weeks goes by, and this was at the initial start of the transition, two or three weeks go by and they're like calling us, why isn't our trash being picked up? I think a lot of it is just unaware. I think we have a lot of folks in the community that really don't pay attention to what we're doing here.
I mean, other than, like I was, like I say, no, other than the ones that don't know about the trash, because as far as, that goes, I mean, I remember during the transition period, sometimes we'd get a lot of complaints about, oh, they're not picking their stuff, this is my street, or they've done this.
That's in the water department wheelhouse.
Yeah.
I had a lady call me, and anybody can tell you anything, so I don't know. I didn't go to look, go check it out. But she said her trash didn't get picked up, it was out. She called, and they told her they'd get it next week. And if that was the case, that's not acceptable. I, frankly, I'm trying to remember who it was, and what's it, I do, I'll tell you.
I will say, so, uh, if you miss trash, if, if your trash isn't picked up, you can call anyone here, to be honest, Becky Scott or my office. But the quickest way would be two one five one, call the utility office. And we actually typically handle, uh, missed pickup same day.
Well, I probably called thirteen forty or anything. I'm trying to remember who it was.
But Bruce never, has never put us off till next week, so he usually.
Just checking to see how the transition goes. Sometimes that's a growing thing.
Right, so what, when I talk about trash in the transition period, I'm talking about what I see with my own eyes when I'm out and about. So now they're calling the, so if any citizen has a complaint, the utility department is pretty much taking care of it. Now, I do know that I've been enforcing trash, uh, whether, you know, it's mattresses or whatever, and I was told that they sold a lot of the little tickets to get rid of large items. So folks, I don't know if folks aren't aware of the situation. I educate them, I'll stop, talk to them, be like, you got a mattress in the backyard? You know, you have to go over to the water department, get a sticker and put on that so it can be picked up. So I think education is really important, and a lot of our, our older folks really need someone to stop by and, and talk to them, and that's what I've been doing as well.
That's good, because that's what I was gonna say, it's not everybody gets on a computer, they just don't. Or even a phone or Facebook, they just don't.
Um, part of my job is, uh, is talking to folks, right? Put a face to a name, introduce myself, and I enjoy that part of the job. I enjoy stopping by if I see someone out cleaning their yard. I stop by, introduce myself, love that part.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I've been doing that.
That it? All right. Thank you very much, Becky. Moving on to second reading, ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-one.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance following. The sum of seven thousand dollars from the general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Seven thousand dollars from the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. And seven thousand dollars from the sewer fund number seven fifty to line item number seven five zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate money for audit fees. Now therefore be updated by the council of the city of Nelsonville and county Ohio's college. The two thousand twenty-one appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sum from the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. Seven thousand dollars from the general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Seven thousand dollars from the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Seven thousand dollars from the sewer fund number seven fifty to line item number seven five zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. The total appropriations are increased by set amount. Therefore, they shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law. Willing act of my council on second reading on the twenty fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Is this the audit fees for the special audit?
For both regular and special, yeah.
I thought we were supposed to get those waived.
They keep doing it for us.
Was Mike writing that down? Do you remember that?
I think they were talking about it one time.
Don't think I recall who Mr. Smith said, he talked to Mr. Edwards, and he was going to fix it, but, uh, we're still getting it.
I tried to talk to Jay.
I think phone calls may be made, but we'll go ahead and approve it tonight, but I think we need to look into that, because I, what I was understanding.
We got the, the law. No, they said, uh, it won't be released until sixty days after the final court proceeding, so it could be quite a while still. Because we still have a whole second round of charges.
And I don't know how much, how long we can go with that.
Right. Right.
On top of that, when I did a record search, she owned property. And we, and we have money missing, we should try to attach that property.
You gotta have it available to attach.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, the court ordered.
That was a problem.
The court's ordered a restitution amount of a hundred dollars.
She still owned this considerable piece of property, has a considerable amount of money, that's worth a considerable amount of money, and I think that if we lost.
Well, we don't have a judgment.
We don't have a judgment. Well, we should get one, yeah. I, I, I mean, we should attempt to get one.
I understand what you're saying, great. A lot of this stuff has to follow along with the process.
All right. We have.
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
All right, I'll second that.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy, before we go to the next ordinance, I want to challenge what Mr. Smith said about section four eleven. Uh, that does say no ordinance granting a franchise or fixing a rate to be charged by a public utility shall be passed by an emergency measure, but I would challenge that the city pool, the city water park is not a public utility, and therefore we could pass that under an emergency ordinance?
I would challenge that it is a public utility. I looked up the, the meaning of utility, and it means the public service. And so, yeah, I would suggest we just go back to the twenty nineteen rates, which we had Leslie here, if you remember, Taylor, and we had a big meeting, and we worked out, uh, over two meetings, and Carla was there. Since the two thousand nineteen rates are on the books and they weren't repealed, that we go back to.
They were repealed in twenty twenty.
No, we made special rates for the foot.
Lisa, I would recommend you just go ahead and adopt it with the emergency on, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Now that it gets strengthened at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll adopt it with the, ordinance, uh, forty-one dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
An ordinance establishing fees for the Nelsonville Water Park in a clarion emergency. Whereas it is necessary to adjust the daily entry, swimming and water aerobic lessons, pool rental, and special event fees for the Nelsonville Water Park last adjusted in two thousand nineteen. Now therefore be updated by the council of the city of Nelsonville at county Ohio's college. The following rates are established for use of the Nelsonville Water Park. The daily entry fee, age three and up, five dollars. Seasonal pass rate for a household maximum of six people. In-town rate is two hundred and fifty dollars, out-of-town rate is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. An adult pass, in-town is one hundred and fifty dollars, out, out-of-town is one hundred and seventy-five. Youth pass is one hundred and twenty-five in-town and one hundred and fifty out-of-town. And the senior over sixty-five pass rate is fifty dollars in-town, seventy-five dollars out-of-town. And for those rates, um, for in-town, person must have a Nelsonville address or a school ID that's shown on the water bill or tax return. And the, in the households of over six? No, okay.
So what, passes were always sixty, right?
Yeah, sixty. Uh, pool rental fee and the rental rate is three hundred dollars for two hours. Swimming lessons are fifty dollars per child, and water aerobic sessions are five dollars. This ordinance shall, is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to a higher revised code of seven thirty-one point thirty, because the immediate access of the ordinance is necessary so that the water park can be opened on time, and this ordinance shall be in full force of effect upon its adoption. Willing act of my council on first reading under suspension of the rule, twenty fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
I have a question, so. There was nothing mentioned about veterans, uh, free admission.
It was on the original draft.
Right, we did discuss that, this one deal.
Was it on the two thousand nineteen ordinance?
Well, they're saying it's the two thousand twenty-one, I didn't see it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember there being a veteran.
So can I make a motion to amend and add, um, so, motion to amend and add military ID, uh, free admission for the military member?
I'll second that.
Me too. I'll defer it. That's it, count it out of town.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Is that for just the military person?
Yeah.
Just for the military.
The military person, okay, yeah.
Well, better.
Yeah, 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 military.
Military.
Yeah.
You specify not dependents. Just better specify ID.
It's just like, you go.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, my kid has military, too. Yeah, most people don't know the difference.
My grandson has one, too.
Yeah.
Actual military veteran.
Excluding dependence.
Excluding dependence, yeah.
I got a question here.
Wait, do we have to vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Unless your question is about the amendment.
It's about the amendment, because I would like for the veterans to get in, but I'm gonna vote no on the ordinance itself because of the emergency clause being on it.
Well, you can vote yes on the amendment, Greg, you know, which indicates for the amendment, and you can vote no on it. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
I need a motion to suspend. Motion to suspend.
Almost, almost, it's a friend.
I'll second that.
All thirty. Shouldn't you say me too?
Me too.
Mr. Joe? Yes. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. uh, Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant? As long as Gary's putting them into it, yes. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Now, you need a motion to adopt.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second that.
Me too.
Uh, Mr. uh, Smith?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's understood that I'll look and see whether the emergency is valid or not?
Absolutely valid.
Yes.
I find that, I, that's appropriate, but.
Okay, so, um, we are to the city manager's report.
Scott, take it away.
All right, um, we touched that street, I know everybody's anxiously waiting about that. Uh, right now, for last week, they pressure checked, checked all the manholes, those all passed. Uh, there was a snap boo with one of the laterals, which was repaired today. And, uh, they're gonna start fixing sidewalks and curves next, and then after that, they will schedule the asphalters as soon as it's, it's able to be scheduled in.
So what was the starting timeline on that? Like the week to?
For which part, they're working now?
They're working now on the sidewalk.
Yeah, today they had to fix the lateral that was messed up. Yeah, today they had to fix the lateral that was messed up, but tomorrow they should be starting on curbs and sidewalks unless something else comes up to be found then.
But is it going to be brick or is it going to be concrete?
Concrete. So that'll wrap up Chestnut, the water project right now. So we have everything squared away. We've been approved by the EPA. However, there's a formality where the EPA passed to send our funding request at the end of the month. And Michael Batts, I talked to him, doesn't see any concern starting now because the EPA has already approved the project. It's just a formality to go to this board at the end of June. So, and the contractors would like to start it first of June, so I just wanted to run that by everyone. Can we start work June 1st and then the formality of waiting EPA to do the final snap, or stamp rather, at the end of June? So, odds.
I guess that gonna cause the same problem with the funding agency.
Seeing what problem?
Starting without complete all permit approval.
So the only problem that we've had is with Wood Lane Drive, and that was an engineering stamp that wasn't put on there. And that's actually not even true either. They stamped it, and then they went and looked at it again and came back and said that they had to check more numbers. Unless you're talking about something else that I'm not thinking of.
Well, I don't know whether I am or not because I don't know what the funding source is for.
This one's, I think it's just straight through the EPA. I don't think this one's USDA or...
It's USDA and stuff, I have to certify that all.
It's not. Right. No, that was the 16 million that we approved last week for the sewer plant.
This is something different.
This is the 3.2 for the water project, changed four main water lines and upgraded meters throughout Nelsonville.
It's a loan money?
Yes. Well, 50, 60, 40, I believe. So 60 grant, 40, I'm taking that number from that bracket.
I thought it was 30, 50, but might have changed.
It could be. I, I muddled them together because we got like four different numbers.
I thought that initial water line program was 30, 50 when they first come and we done it.
Very well, what doesn't matter to me was 30, 50 or 20, 35 or whatever, 28. The question is whether there's money in borrow or whether or not the funding agency is going to have an issue with... There's the basic rule that you can't spend grant money until you have received it. So I don't know how that applies in the borrowing situation, but I think we should pass before we do it.
Sure. It was Michael's recommendation to move forward, but he definitely wanted me to check with you all. We talked about it this morning. So, so with that being said, the water project, Mill Street's going to be up front in the list. We're doing Mill Street, St. John Street, out, six, or out Kimberly toward the old post and school, and then somewhere down by Monroe. Monroe Street, we got water lines going in as well. And then we're...
Letting Watkins on that.
That's that same area of Watkins, Monroe, because I don't think that includes, for whatever reason, I'm thinking of Watkins one got struck, but I can confirm that because they have reduced costs, but I'm not 100% certain. I can answer that for you guys if you need to.
Are we going to do sewer line when we have the street tore up for water?
When you say sewer line...
We should replace some sewer line there, too, won't we?
So we have a sewer line going through the manhole there, so we have a sanitary going through the storm, which is not okay. And the project that we, we are fixing it, but I don't remember which project's fixing it. That makes sense.
I remember we were going to do it ourselves instead of that.
Well, the guys will be do part of it. It's the, hand, I'm having a brain fart, but there's one part of it that we need help with as far as the rerouting it, but the new manhole and such, we'll set that. Also on Mill Street, we're setting a new manhole and adding two eight-inch mains up to the six-inch mains that are coming down the hill.
Water or sewer?
Sewer.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about. We were going to do that ourselves.
Absolutely, we're still on track. We just need to get in there a week before they're ready to start doing their thing. We'll tear up our portion, change up the manhole. We already have all the parts ordered here. Change that out and be good to go.
Then we're going back with the asphalt?
Yes. Um, potholes, the guys are still working like crazy getting the potholes caught up. There's so many of them, it may be hard to see any progress, but they are working on it very...
Thanks for those. It was a pleasant, you know, we were in a closed truck.
Yep, that one, that one's filled in.
In that regard, can we do any, anything necessary, like if you need to hire a couple extra people or whatever, can we do anything necessary to get the potholes filled?
Not really, I mean, we're already on a budget.
They're working on it.
I bet.
That would mess up the budget, wouldn't it?
Well, I know if you aren't part-time people temporarily and got to work, it takes so many people to do the work, I don't know how...
The only other issue we're having, Greg, and it's a...
I know, I'm a one of these, I understand that.
No, 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 the resource pool of workers is extremely challenging right now. Nobody wants to work.
Maybe that'll get better once the extra unemployment goes away here.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know.
I just wanted to say whatever we need to do to get the potholes...
You do have a plan, right?
Yeah.
Right, so we're working through the potholes, we definitely are, got some birds on the radar for paving.
I can add that.
So the new machine's helping out significantly. If y'all remember, we got that hot box last year. So what that does is allow us to hold four tons, so the night before, we can actually go get four tons of material and let it set overnight.
Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Sherman, what happened?
City manager's report.
The, it'll hold four tons, so we can go get four tons at the end of the day. That way, the guys, first thing in the mornings, are able to start executing.
Don't have to wait in line.
Nope, no waiting in line. So the, the hot box has a plug-in option, so we're not running the flame all night long, but it'll keep it hot. The guys really like it. It's also allowed them to do a more thorough, certain, some of the main streets that we don't foresee needing to do any full pavement on anytime soon, they'll be doing square cuts and seal them up properly. Other ones that are on the radar to be tore up for future water lines or maybe even next year paving, we are just cleaning up the hole, putting tack in and adding asphalt now just for speed and efficiency. Okay? The, so the pool pump came in a while ago, and we got that in, which was great, and we were waiting on other spare parts to come in, which was to hold up till the last minute. We got all the spare parts in last Friday, started filling the pool, and we had a line break on one of the chemicals. So FD went in there and cleaned up all the chemicals on Saturday night for us. We prepared the line today, and the water levels, when I say levels, I mean the chemical levels are close. We are being inspected by the health department on Thursday. If that goes off applying colors, then I will talk to Leslie about opening Friday. If not, we'll open Saturday, and then definitely on Friday if we have any deficiencies that we got to clean up on, that'll take care of it Friday as well. The, also, the, just as a reminder, everyone, the actual pump that we had rebuilt last year didn't break, it was the electric motor attached to it that broke. So they're getting us a quote now to fix that electric motor. If it's something as simple as bearings, it won't be a very significant cost, and then we'll have a backup pump.
Three, three, three NTs that shipped in from the pump?
They did, so we haven't received it yet. That was the next part. So, once we have that all together, there will be, we'll have a resolution to thank, accept their donation, thank them. All right. With the next part, so to the trash complaints, I was going to talk about that, too. It's already been beat a little bit, but the trash complaints have come down. A lot of the complaints have been subjective as far as trash cans being thrown. I talked to the carrier, every single complaint we've got, we've addressed it. He's doing everything he can to accommodate everybody. His guys did get assaulted last week, but that seems to resolve itself as well and becoming a smoother operation. The, the last thing I have is Rocky donated 12 pairs of shoes to our police department, and in order to make that a done deal, we would need a motion for you folks to accept that donation, which the guys love. It's the shinier toed shoes. It has a name, I forget it, they told me, but... Stewie did it, so I didn't want to call it, but...
Nice.
Yes, Stuart.
Stuart.
Yes, there we go.
Is it a junior?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from Rocky to our police department.
I'll second that.
And thank them.
And thank them, yes.
I'll vote for the motion, but could we do an actual official resolution just to make sure it was...
Well, I asked that today, and I understood, you know, they don't really need it or want it. Certainly nobody asked for it, but I mean, we can do it at a future meeting, like supposed to.
Go ahead and do the motion right now, and then next meeting, do the resolution on our ordinance on suspension of the rule.
You can make a second.
Yeah, second it.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
I think it...
No, I think it are.
Yes.
He don't need to...
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
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 Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, no, sorry.
Go to the order.
Go to the order, sorry. I'm ready to get out of here.
Yeah, Mrs. Grant, Mrs. Grant, Mrs. Grant? Mrs. Grant, start with you.
Well, actually, I had a question for Taylor. Have we heard anything about the census yet?
I have not heard one thing. About one thing. They have released federal and state level data, and I think they may have released some preliminary county, but nothing for cities.
Okay, thank you. So if we go to the order, I would just have to say please continue to support local and volunteer whenever you can.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Well, up there, yeah.
Mr. Booth?
I don't think we're...
I just wanted to, of course, Mr. Taylor and I missed tonight because of our kid's award ceremony at Nelsonville York this evening. I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates, and the future looks bright.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jones?
That's what I was going to say also, congratulations to the graduates, and also thank you to all the community organizations around that give our students scholarships to continue their education.
Mr. Smith?
I wanted to bring up, I brought, something I brought up when I tried to bring it up, and Gary said that ordinance number 1021 and 1121 was re-passed on March 8th. However, ordinance 1020 wasn't, wasn't re-passed on, on March 28th, and it was passed on March 1st, so notice that said nothing about setting a rate. That was a spatial meeting. If I heard your, your...
I know what we're talking about, Steve.
Well, it was the, it was the ordinance to allow Taylor to bill for trash, 1021. And on March the 1st, there was a spatial notice that said, that allowed the city manager to pick a franchise, a trash franchise. On March the 1st, then it then, on that spatial meeting passed ordinance number 1021 and 1121, with the charter saying that you can only address what's in the spatial meeting notice. I brought it up, I brought it up a couple times, I wrote a letter. At the March 8th meeting, you said, or at the March 8th meeting, they brought in the 1121, but they didn't bring in the 1021 and do it over. So I got all the documents from Susan, I'm kind of straight the way it is. 1021 was not done over, as you said it was, at the meeting. So as we said now, you have an ordinance with, that was not adopted properly, allowing Taylor to bill for trash.
The city.
The city. I'm just, the...
I'd have to look, I'd have to look into it, Greg.
Well...
Well, all I have to do is look.
I mean, I attempted like four times to get someone to deal with it. So I, I, I think, you know, it needs dealt with. That means, right now, you have an ordinance that was good properly passed on March the 1st.
So you say, okay.
Okay, so I say so it was.
So, all right, Mr. Booth?
No, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor.
There it is.
And there it is.
Yeah, Justin kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but I wanted to congratulate the class of 2021 Nelsonville York High School graduates. The award ceremony was, was fantastic, and there was a lot of money given out this evening, and extremely proud of all the kids that, you know, really worked hard over this last year, and, and shows dedication that, and determination, especially through what we've been going through, that they still persevered. And so I'm really proud and I'm really excited about all the kids' futures, and like Justin said, future's bright, so I'm excited. That's all.
Mr. Sherman?
Well, I'd also like to congratulate the class of 2021, it was very difficult, especially going through COVID, all the, all the things they had to endure that are...
Has left the conference.
Oh, he hung up on me. Just wanted to echo that. And then I want to remind everybody, we are having campers on the square June 5th. It's for a good cause, we're going to send children of Nelsonville to camp, ages seven to 13, and it'll be a three-day, two-night event at Camp Young and Long. Show up, show your support, and you have children in those, those age groups, you'll be able to sign up for a lottery drawing, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
I would need volunteers.
I would just like to say, starting off, thank you to our police department, code enforcement. The mayor's court fund is just absolutely astounding, what we've done, and it takes a team effort, fire department, everybody. I know the fire, the utilities department's been out on several water leaks at nighttime again. They're doing a great job, and then they're at work the next day. So, and one last thing, I normally don't do this, but I'd like to give a shout out to my son, who not only graduated, but who also signed up and took the oath for the United States Air Force. So he will be going into law enforcement and going, leaving soon, so that's all. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't, okay. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Yes.
Taylor?
He's gone.
He's gone.
He hung up. See you, Justin.
Bye-bye, thank you.